Correct.
That's two.
Yeah.
So we can we change?
Um, no, it's state law.
Christina, glad to meet you.
I mean, you can miss.
There's Eric.
Sorry about Christina. Nice to meet you.
Hi Christina, how are you?
Pleasure to meet you.
Hi, Christina Dietrich. She's the incoming chief deputy.
Okay.
Big shoes to put on. Paul's great.
Usually, usually he'll listen to you.
Mark, were you MDMF when he was on the board?
All right, so Mr. Clerk, are you ready? You are ready? Absolutely. Okay, we're going to convene today's work session to order. We have our courts and our constitutional officers as well as our electoral board. In total, we have 10 different officials who are going to be presenting today, and we only have two hours to do it. So we're going to get right after it and start with our clerk of the Circuit Court. We thank you very much, the Honorable Paul Ferguson, for being here so we can get started expeditiously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will try to move quickly. With me, to my right and your left, is Christina Dietrich. She is the incoming chief deputy of the office. So we're pooling the positions, so she's actually taking on that role now, but officially, June the 7th, will be the chief deputy of the office. Before that, she's handled our technology, long-term planning issues, and electronic filings, and other types of issues that have to do with technology in our office. Nicole, first slide here. Nice picture of our holiday party there where we all wore sweaters. Next slide. We were honored to be selected for County Manager's Award this year along with DTS, who we collaborated with, to institute a new probate system. If you don't know what probate is, you're fortunate. That means you haven't gone through the passing of a loved one where you were the executor of an estate, but that is a part of our office. We also store wills in our office if people want to do that. It was a system that was no longer functional, and replacing it was something we were not looking forward to, but with the assistance of DTS, everything went fairly smoothly, and now it is operational, and we will not need to ask for funds for this type of system. It was sort of an extension of our land records system, which we had replaced previously, which is running and functioning well also. Next slide, please. We are pushing e-filing both in our land records department and civil and criminal sections. Our land record numbers are better than our civil and criminal sections. We reached the 50% mark. If I'm asked a question, I can try to, try to guess why, but anyway, it saves people that are recording documents with transfers of property and purchases of a property from coming into our office, and our goal is convenience. Also, it helps our staff in that any documents that are filed in paper have to be hand-scanned in rather than coming straight to our computer. Next slide, please. Okay, we are trying to repurpose space to do more with what we have, and we, by law, after a certain period of time, are allowed to destroy the old paper files that we have. So it's a laborious manual process, but we are working on that, and we're able to destroy 5,000 files in the last year. The goal is to have more workspace and better workspace for our employees. We continue to see increases in our civil filings. I can try to give you some reasons why, but I think the best one from a good news perspective is Arlington is becoming more of a business locale. Obviously, with the attention Amazon brought, that's going to even increase in future years. So we've had over a 200% increase in civil filings. So Judy says I got that wrong. We have of certain types of contract cases, not, there's lots of different civil cases, but these are, these contract ones are business-related. Anyway, even with the technology increases, it still takes staff time to process all of these. We have electronic filing in Arlington, Fairfax, and Alexandria does not. So when people are litigating, they oftentimes have choices of venue, and I think because we have e-filing and they don't, they might be filing here. So it's possible that those numbers could go down in future years when those courts have e-filing, but we're just seeing a trend up. If these trends continue to go up, we will need to ask for more staffing in the future. Next slide, please. All right, so this is our civil and criminal electronic filings, which, as you can see, are increasing, and we're proud of that, but are not quite at the level or even close to our land records. Next slide, please. This is a tough budget year for Arlington, and for you as a board, we know. The county manager asked for budget cuts, and our office complied with the elimination of a business systems analyst position. We are taking some of that budget savings, and we'll use that for corresponding temporary staff funding that we may need and other contracting funding. Of course, you've heard that we are regaining the fourth judge in our Circuit Court, whereas we used to have four, it was reduced to three a few years ago, and now it's going back up to four, and so we will need a fourth courtroom clerk to provide staffing for the four judges. We hope you will approve the county manager's recommendation of that fourth courtroom clerk. There are some administrative expenses that are one-time for getting that position started. Next slide, please. There is an impact to the elimination of the business system analyst position. This position was the really hands-on courtroom technology person, so we're trying to train other staff to do that, and we have a vacancy coming up that will be created when Christina moves into the chief's deputy position, so we will try to have that new person have some of that training also. This position did provide some assistance to the general district and the juvenile and domestic relations courts, so we'll have to do our best to accommodate them, or they'll have to use in-house people to maintain and monitor their technology needs. Next slide. These are our key budget considerations. I've already noted we had a 12 increase in civil cases, which largely is the 12.2 total increase of percentage of recorded and filed documents over the last two years. We are getting some complaints from our line staff that the additional work is causing stress on their queues. We're asking them to do what they can, as we don't have more staff, ability to bring on more staff for them. I've already mentioned that if it continues, we will be asking for more staff. Our vendor costs continue to edge up, both for our digital imaging system, our case management system, which was the paperless system that you funded five years ago. Our land record system has a vendor, and we have a vendor that assists us with jury management. And with all these technology investments we're making, we view that they have an approximate five-year lifespan. You never can tell, so I'm hopeful that I'm not coming in and asking for more money in the next year or two, but I don't, I can't make those absolute promises. But for the near term, we're looking like we're in good shape, which allows us to comply with the cut request of the business systems analyst position. That's all I have. I would welcome questions. When I was asked whether, what order I wanted to go in, I sincerely said, "I don't care", figuring you would put me towards the end, knowing that there would be less questions then, but someone decided to put me first, so I know you guys may have wanted to have a dialogue.
We do, but we will not keep you extensively, since we do have many. That'll also be the benefit of going first, is that we have the rest of the agenda to get through. But questions for Mr. Ferguson, starting with Mr. Di Ferenti.
Just one question. As you're switching to electronic records, and keeping in mind you need to update the technology, and this could be for either of you, is there a long-term savings in terms of efficiency that might result to an electronic system with respect to the amount of employee time you would need over three, five, 10 years as you go all more electronic versus land?
It absolutely has been, I would say, but the problem is, is our numbers have continued to increase, and I really think in looking back to those days when we were in paper files, we were usually just weeks behind. We're just, the level of service was not where we wanted it to be. So the technology has allowed us to get the level of service to an acceptable level. I think that's relevant for all of you as far as the business community with civil cases especially. So that's, that's a question, Mr. Di Ferenti, that's been frequently asked. Can I, can I have potentially less staff than I have now? And I really think when you compare our office to others in the surrounding jurisdictions, we're very lean, so in fact, I've tried to lay the groundwork that if the numbers continue to increase, even though we've got the technology, we're, we need staff to electronically process these queues, that if somebody's out, let's say for a week, we had somebody who was on unexpected medical leave, you know, all of a sudden, the queues jump to 100 cases that are not being processed.
Sure, I'm mindful of the civil increases. You mentioned, I'm just trying to get that background on where we've been, and level of services certainly helps too.
Thank you, and Mr. Ferguson, we do appreciate your, you're actually keeping your staffing level, given this tough budget year, and recognize that has the human impact of losing what I'm sure was a valued member of your team, so I just want to make sure you know that we appreciate that.
Thank you, and if you look at my staffing level, this is, believe it or not, my start of my 12th year as being clerk, which is hard to believe, but we have the same amount of staff as when, as when I started, so there, it's been a relatively flat. Sometimes it's gone down one or up one, but the trend line is fairly flat, which I know is where you like it, either flat or down.
I think we look at our own county board office, and we can understand that. So I do have one question.
Responsible for that line going up when I was there, but it's been flat since I left.
So you explained the civil cases and the filings increase, and what might be some of the reasons behind that. What about on the criminal side, where you've also had a pretty explosive growth in criminal cases adjudicated from the court? I mean, I know we can get into that with the judges, but...
Crime is level or slightly down.
Right.
That's, that's my viewpoint. It sometimes has to do with the way you count the cases.
Oh, okay, okay.
Because the way you count the cases determines.
I see.
What, how many judges you get.
Okay, so that may not be necessarily reflective of an increase in criminal activity?
Yeah, I actually see it level or slightly declining.
Okay.
Over the last year at least.
All right, Ms. Garvey.
Paul, thank you so much for having no big requests.
Thank you, Ms. Garvey.
This year, yep, and I'm glad it worked out before, and just looking at the number, it's actually, it's striking on some of the measures, how like wills probated kind of stayed the same, marriage license, I mean, even over all these years with the, isn't that, that seems kind of, that's interesting.
And then, and then also concealed weapons permits have been leveled. I remember.
Same number.
Your first year or two on the board, there was a massive jump in that, and that's, that worried me, but it's been, it's been relatively flat.
Yeah, too bad it didn't go back down. The one, and I think it probably is how it's counted, or I don't think it's the new judge, so the number of jurors summoned.
Ah, good eye, good eye.
Well, it's just right there.
Why? We, and Ms. Garvey has been one of our most frequently summoned jurors. She's, it is a random process, so any of you could be summons, but I believe...
God, every time, though.
She's not selected, but she does come in and express her willingness to serve, and I think she's served two to three times maybe during my 11 years, which you're only allowed to serve every three years, so her number comes up. Maybe you should be buying lottery tickets, because it's statistically improbable. But to answer your question specifically, we moved from having to serve for a whole week, where you were at least on call for a whole week, to just one day. And so, and so because we moved to just serving for one day, we had to really double the number of available jurors for the whole year. And, and it is misleading to say one day, one trial. One trial could theoretically last weeks, and people are usually not happy when they come in and find that out, but fortunately, there's usually only maybe four or five of those lengthy, more than a week trials during the year, showing that we are a safe community, and the civil litigators usually figure out a way to settle, but not always.
Thank you, and actually, thank you for doing that.
Your mic's off.
Sorry, thank you. Thank you for doing that, because it makes the burden of being a juror so much less on our residents, and people are more willing to do it. I mean, it's just, it's good all the way around. Appreciate it.
Thanks. We've received positive feedback on it also. I have to say, we were not the trendsetter there. You know, I think Fairfax was way out in front of us on that, so we, we wanted to be, we want to be competitive, just like all of you, we want to be competitive with our neighboring jurisdictions and out in front where we can be.
Very good. That's an appropriate note for us to close, and we'll get you out on that one. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Simon, for all you're doing.
Appreciate it. Good to meet you, Ms. Dietrich. Take care.
You know, I would, one final note is that congratulations on the Amazon, but we, we do feel that, you're probably hearing this from everybody, but with Amazon coming in, that could potentially increase civil filings, not just with Amazon, but with future businesses that might come, because the more business you have, the more litigation you might have, so.
Or you, you know, get those trends coming in where you see that they're going to have material impacts on your ability to deliver services. Don't wait until next year for us to sit around this table to let us know.
I'll take you up on that, but thanks a lot.
Thank you. And we'll do a little set change and invite the Commissioner of Revenue to come join us at the front. It's Toasty. All right, we're pleased to be joined by the Honorable Ingrid Maroy, Commissioner of Revenue, and take it away, Commish.
We're on. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mark. That was not a joke. I'm going to be quick. Hint, hint, hint. This year, I'm not asking for anybody, for anything. I just wanted to go over the different divisions' overview, so if we can have the next, that's me, not my sister. Next slide. The department overview, office overview, actually, the business, we have four divisions. Admin division, we take care of the budget and human resources in the admin division, so we'll just go over the business tax division, the vehicle personal property tax division, and the compliance division. In the business tax division, we had some key achievements, one of which was a registration and assessment of accessory homestay operations, for which I think I explained last year what we were going to do for that. We, we hired a company that finds all these homestay operations, because it's very difficult to do through one of the larger companies that won't give us all of the information that we need so that we are able to audit. We increased efficiency in discovery resulting in increased revenue, and that was because of the vendor that we hired. In the audit section of the business division, we increased revenue as a, as a result of an additional audit position that was approved by the county, and we streamlined the appeals process. We actually generated over 252,000 in 2018 because of this addition of, of the audit position. The next slide will go over the vehicle personal property tax division, where we now have early billing. When vehicles are moved or sold, they're immediately billed instead of in the next big billing cycle, which means that hopefully money comes in more quickly, and people won't forget to pay their bills. Additional automation for faster retrieval of assessment data has helped us to keep on top of vehicles coming in and out. Improved electronic data exchange with the DMV and other state agencies has, has helped us tremendously. The compliance division on the next slide is basically in charge of the personal property enforcement program and also assists customers with their Virginia state income tax. We increased revenue by over 350K in 2018. We actually started using the license plate reader last year. It's now fully functional, and we've seen a lot more discovered vehicles because of that system. It's a mostly automated process. When I say mostly, I mean that there's a lot of data exchange between us and the DMV. The DMVs in several, several states that are going through LexisNexis, which we used to use manually online, but now they can take a file from us electronically, which speeds up the whole process. The next slide talks about summary of proposed budget changes. We have fewer expenses and a little bit more revenue. We still have 53 FTEs. We actually started in 2004 with 56 FTEs. We now have 53. So we're doing more with less, because we've, we've improved our systems and our processes and using electronic exchanges. On the next slide, we had some cost savings, or we're going to have some cost savings. We're going to stop mailing out and printing business license tax certificates, and we're going to save $8,000 there. What we usually do is we mail it out to customers who have paid their business license tax. We're going to stop doing that, because we need to save money. We're, of course, going to communicate with businesses as to how they can get their business license tax certificates. They can either eventually get it online through their, their online account, or we will email it, email the certificate to them, and then they can download it and print it out if they need, if they need it. And many businesses need it for bank loans and such. $36,000 in printing and postage savings by asking customers to submit their tax returns online, and $81,000 for motor vehicle assessment notices that we are still mailing out this year, but we're putting a notice out on the notice stating that this is the last time we're going to print them. Next year, they will be able to go, customers will be able to go to their cap account, their online account, and see their assessment information, and then make changes if they have sold or moved their cars, or if they have bought new vehicles. So that will give us a total cost savings, hopefully, of 125,000, maybe even more. Some initiatives. The assessment and collection enterprise system, the ACE system, will be upgraded starting April 1st. In the business division, we are trying to automate at least 90% of business tax returns. There will always be businesses that will need our help in mailing them their tax returns, because a lot of our business customers are small businesses. In the vehicle personal property tax division, eliminate the assessment notices, and there might be a couple that, where we have to mail it, and then we will. And in the compliance division, which is a big, this was a big initiative for us, increase discovery and revenue through the license plate reader. Just to let you know that the number of discoveries have already more than doubled. We were comparing January 2018 to January 2019, since that is a full month. We also did, we looked at the quarter, but the quarter is not over yet, so I thought it might be good to show you. Last year, January 2018, we discovered, which doesn't mean that we taxed, but we discovered, we cited 500 vehicles with no county decal. This year, in January, we cited 1,158 vehicles that are not on the, on the tax database. In January 2019, we did not use visual inspection, we used the cameras, so that shows how much more effective this system is. We, last year in January, we mailed out of the 500 vehicles that we cited, 340 of those customers received a mail, a letter from us stating that you may be liable for tax. Please let us know what your tax situation is. This year, out of the 1,158 vehicles, we mailed out 780 letters. That's more than double. So I foresee a doubling of revenue this year compared to last year, and that should make the county manager very happy. And if you have any questions, I would like, I think it's, yeah, if you have any questions, I'd love to hear them and try to answer them.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. So to get us started, why don't we, we continue with the license plate readers, and congrats at the level of efficiency. I'm sure it also reduces errors as well, and so it's good to see that reflected in your numbers. But people have expressed concerns about the degree at which you're keeping this data for your own use and not for wider uses that could violate people's civil liberties and privacy. So can you just share a little bit about how you, you secure and use the data?
I'd be happy to. The data that we collect are, the data are saved on the vendor's server and are deleted within 24 hours. And the way we check that is we, we check the server in the morning, because we, we post the data maybe around 8, 9 o'clock or so, and then the next morning, we check to make sure that the data are gone. And so that is working very well. The data that we do collect and that we have to use in-house are data that we used before, except that before we collected it manually. The only, the only piece of information that the camera needs is the plate, the plate number, and so it, it records the plate, a picture of the plate and a text file of that plate, and that's all we need. And we send those data to LexisNexis, and they will figure out where the owners of those data live, and they send us a file back with names and addresses of the owners. We used to do that all manually online. DMV data, Arlington or Virginia DMV data still has to be done manually, although we did find out that another jurisdiction is using some type of system with the DMV, so we're looking into that, where they send plate data, Virginia plate data to the DMV, and the DMV sends back information about the owners. So we're trying to, to figure out how we should do the same. So, so those are the only purposes that we use, the same that we did before, and whatever is saved on the server is gone within 24 hours.
Thank you. Thank you. Another question concerning accessory home stays. Do you have, is that part of the increase in the business license tax returns that you're processing? Is any of that due to the number of people that you're finding?
Yeah, some of that is. We currently have 252 accounts on file for home stay operations, 252 accounts. There are those hotels that are coming in and that are, that will be renting long and short term, and also the building on Columbia Pike where, is that why?
Oh, Centro, that one?
Yeah, because there's, a part of that building is going to be used as a short-term lease. So we're going to add accounts, of course. Of course, that administration is a lot easier because that goes through one company. But as far as taxes on transient occupancy tax, in 2017, we realized $41,542 for the individual operations, and 2018, $89,839, so it's doubled. Business license, 2017, $5,160, 2018, $11,059, so more than doubled. And business tangible, 2017, $1,548, and 2018, $3,0510. So again, more than doubled. So it's working pretty well. Airbnb service is still not something that we can use because we, they're not transparent. They will only send us one amount, and then we don't know who the operators are. And this is why it was so important to us to find a vendor who could find those operators for us, because we need to be able to audit.
All right, so you answered my next question. So thank you very much for being efficient and predictive.
I read your mind.
You two were connected like that. Mr. Di Ferenti.
So just back to the license plate readers, I'm guessing that the agreement with the vendor also limits their, they would not be able to disclose with any third parties that information. Okay. And then my question is just from a collections and revenue standpoint, I believe it's the compliance division. Of course, we want to welcome everyone, but, you know, making sure that vehicles and multi-unit buildings, folks who move in and out. You've been, my understanding is that you work with those, you may have readers just outside, or you want to make sure, can you talk a little bit about your efforts to make sure that those who move and actually reside in Arlington, even if they have just moved in for a year lease, are contributing to the resources we need?
You mean, how do we do this? We go into the garage where they moved in. We have access to about, to over 350 garages. We are also able to double the number of garages and neighborhoods that we visit compared to what we did manually. Last year, January, for example, we went out six times, and this year, January, we went out 12 times, mostly into underground garages. We also do surface parking lots, but mostly underground garages. The way we communicate with new residents is we provide information to the apartment managers to, about our tax rules in Arlington and about the residence tax liability or tax responsibility. So we leave information with the apartment managers. We ask them for, every January, we ask them for access to their garage because it helps us and them. And then we communicate, we also get lists every year. By law, they have, all the apartments and condo buildings have to provide us with a list of people who live there, who live in their building. And then we compare that with our tax rolls. And if we find that somebody's not on the tax rolls, they get letters from us. So that has worked pretty well. Now, as far as neighborhoods, because one customer was concerned that we would be driving around with our cameras mounted on top of the cars, which we do, and go through neighborhoods. We only go through neighborhoods that have been issues in the past, where customers have called us to complain about cars without decals. So those are the neighborhoods that we're going to keep on our list because those seem to be the most transient to us. So we will keep going there with the car. But somebody asked me, well, aren't you going to this and that neighborhood? There are people that hide their cars, their Jaguars, in the garage. I won't be able to get them anyway because it's in a private garage, so.
Great, thank you.
And before hitting Mr. Gutschall, do you have any concerns with our not having the decal in the future as to how that'll impact this operation, at least from the complaint-based perspective?
Yes, because in the future, after July 1st, right, that's when the decal goes away, the customers will only be able to report those vehicles that have out-of-state license plates. Because in-state license plates, no car will require a decal. So out-of-state license plates, they can still report to us. But yeah, that goes away. But then again, we are much more efficient with this system.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Gutschall.
Thank you. I wanted to follow up on the statutory assessment for business tangible properties. And so you've noted that it decreased a little bit due to automation of processing through an outside vendor, which is fine. What I'm interested in is, of those statutory assessments, do you have any way to characterize whether, are these the, sort of the small potatoes, the large potatoes? Are these small accounts, large accounts? What, I guess one way to ask that would, if you know, the average assessment?
It could be.
Profile of the assessment.
Yeah, that's hard to say, but I don't know if Paula can answer this question.
You can certainly follow up with us if it requires a little bit of research.
Because we would have to.
That I didn't, yeah, prepare you to answer this, so I'm sorry for that, but.
But what we can do is run a report to see where those statutory assessments are, whether they're small business, large business, medium-sized, where they're located, and then give you an idea.
I think that that would be helpful to understand who and why, to the extent that you know that or can read into your data, who and why are receiving the statutory assessment as opposed to filing in the way that they're supposed to? And then that might shed some light on opportunities for what, how we're addressing. If it is, as I suspect, tends to be small businesses who don't, who may not realize what the requirements are, and then they get hit with the statutory filing. And then another follow-up to that would then be how many, if you can, look at how many repeat statutory filers there are. So is it, do you generally find, once you hit them once with the statutory assessment, then they come into compliance in the subsequent years? So just some thought around that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Terrific. See, no further questions. Thank you very much, Commissioner. We'll look forward to visiting you on the second floor at some point in the near future.
Oh, by the way, DMV Connect is on the second floor once every month, on the first Wednesday of every month. DMV Connect has a more extensive service than what we provide because they can renew your driver's license, and they can issue real ID, if you want a real ID, because it's optional. But if you want a real ID, you can do it on the second floor.
All right, and that's which Wednesday every month?
Wednesday of every month, yeah.
First Wednesday of every month.
From 8:30 until 4:00.
Thank you so much. All right. Next, we're going to invite up our treasurer.
Feel like we're speed dating, right?
Indeed, indeed.
Good afternoon.
So welcome, Ms. De La Pava. Thank you so much for joining us this afternoon, and take it away.
Okay, I appreciate the opportunity to talk about the treasurer's office, one of my favorite topics. My mission, as you know, the constitutional mission of the treasurer, is to bill and receive taxes, to collect when necessary, to safeguard and disperse as the county or schools dictate. What you might not realize is that I have nine MOUs with different departments and schools, and we collect for 26 different agencies. So basically, that, and I have a contract with the commissioner, or not the commissioner, the Commonwealth's attorney, to collect court fines and fees. So all the county revenue that comes in eventually comes through our bank accounts. As I've said before, if you're looking for the ultimate report card for a treasurer, it would be the delinquency rate. It all really boils down to that. We have, over my term, don't tell Frank, okay? We have lowered the delinquency rate 43% to 0.187. That's an amazing number. It's the lowest in Arlington County's history. It's the lowest in the Commonwealth, and I would challenge anyone to find a jurisdiction in all of the United States that has a lower delinquency rate than Arlington County.
Tell you what, if you do that work and find that you are the lowest in the country, we'll do a ceremony at a county board meeting.
Done.
I think Frank would be very, is very proud of you, so I think we can tell Frank.
Okay, thank you. So I'm knocking on doors these days. I've knocked on 1,500 doors in 24 of the 54 precincts so far, and people ask me how all the time. And one of the things that I talk about is delinquency prevention, right? That is a great way to lower your delinquency rate. But in addition to that, we do have two new programs this year. One is friendly visits to businesses. Businesses go delinquent, and sometimes we get money in right away, and sometimes we don't. But instead of waiting for it to get to the point where we have to go and do seizures, we thought we would go in and just talk to them. And there's an amazing amount of confusion out there on, you know, on collecting, filing, remitting taxes. And so when we go out, we are able to provide them contacts with people in either the county or the commissioner's office that can help them. And the vast majority of times that the delinquencies are then cleared up, and hopefully, going back to your question, helps them figure out the whole system of taxation. One of the businesses that we came across this last year was in the new Ballston Quarter, and they had just opened, but they hadn't been collecting meals tax at all. And so we contacted them, you know, we were rather alarmed, and they ended up not only, you know, getting things right through the help of the commissioner of revenue and her staff, and then paid their delinquencies, but had they not, had they not charged people meals tax, they still would have been liable for it, and that wouldn't have been a very business-friendly thing to do. So we're working on those business, those business visits have proven to be more than just a collection technique. The other thing I wanted to talk to you about that we did knew was surrounding tax relief for the elderly and the disabled. I know that the county had a working group. I know that you have changed the ordinance up, but we all know that there are some times that people that are eligible for this program simply forget to apply. So last year, we did a little project where we sorted the data, and we looked at who applied last year, who still owned their home but hadn't yet applied this year, and the deadline was looming, two weeks away. Thirty-three households fell into that category. We sent teams out with DHS, with Department of Human Services applications for tax relief, and all 33 were able to get their applications in on time. I don't know if you're aware, but the Code of Virginia mandates that I advertise this program, and we do so on bills, and we do so in the media, but this was kind of the real roll-up-your-sleeves type of action. And I was very excited to do it because these are some of the most vulnerable people that we have here in Arlington. We do know that there's been some budget constraints in these last years, this year coming up included. I know I talked to you last year about our banking RFP that resulted in a $400,000 per year annual cost for, cost savings for Arlington County, and that will continue on forever until we do our next RFP. But we hadn't done an RFP in Arlington County for banking services since 2004. And so when we did it, it was long overdue, and I was excited that it was, the savings was as dramatic as it was. Lest you have any questions, that does not, savings from my budget, that was savings from the general fund. We also, last August, we sent out the bills, and of course, what happens, the phones blow up because people get bills that they've either closed their accounts, or they've moved out of the state, and it's been maybe five months, and they weren't expecting the bill. So I asked, I asked you to allow me to bill on closed accounts immediately. We've sent out about 2,500 bills this year already, so we're implementing it. And the main thing that it does, I think if you really boil it down to its essence, is it reduces taxpayer confusion. And simplifying taxes for our constituents is a really important thing. In addition, though, we get a little bit of money in this year, this fiscal year. That's a benefit, and it also, for those that are not going to pay, it speeds up our collection process. So hopefully, more of those overall accounts will be paid in full. We are starting, and this is going to be a big endeavor for my office, we are starting a year-long upgrade to our tax system. We are the only ones in the entire world that are still on this version of this tax system. And we are vulnerable because of vendor support to this version. So we are very excited. It took a while to get into place. We've worked really hard with our technology services area. They've been incredibly supportive, and we start on Monday. It should take a year to finish, so we will be done in FY 2020. Also, you were, you were, I think, wonderful in eliminating the need to display a decal last September, and we're working to implement that ordinance change. I think it was, I think it is, it is going to be overall a huge benefit. I mean, I don't think decals can stay around forever, so it was simply a matter of time. I am still very, very sad that we lose our decal competition, the art competition, but I've heard through the grapevine that our registrar is doing an art competition. So yes, I hope that it will continue in some form or another. That decal elimination also led to our savings this year. We had a budget savings of slightly over $80,000. As you well know, the, we sent the decal with the bill, and we still have to send the bill. So there is, there's not as much postage savings as you would imagine, but the stock for the decal was fairly expensive relative to a piece of paper. And also, the part that's not in those savings numbers is as more and more of our neighboring locality stopped requiring a decal, the cost of the decal stock was starting to really Believe it or not, Alexandria, they passed an ordinance to get rid of their decal later than we did, but they did it as of immediately, so they beat us to the punch. They no longer require them. I think the city of Fairfax and the city of Falls Church are the only ones that are in our local area that still require decals. Looking forward, 2020, I hear that you might be considering allowing us to offer lifetime dog licenses. Dog licenses are a service, public service, and interestingly enough, if you look at the percentage of vaccinated dogs that are licensed, we are one of the lowest in the Commonwealth, the lowest compliant, not compliance rate, but the lowest of licensed rate. We were down, a couple years ago when we did this study, we were down at 25%. I think there's estimates that there's maybe 30,000 dogs in Arlington. It feels like more when I'm knocking on doors, but we currently have, I think it's 8,356 licenses out of those 30,000 dogs. So we really do need to get the licenses up because that's what helps people when they've been bit, and it's, they have the records. There's a couple. There's a couple of things that I'll say. One, we will continue, we get notification from vets when a dog's been licensed, or not licensed, but vaccinated. We will keep those licenses up to date in our system, so we will keep those records updated. We will continue to reach out to pet owners who we get information from a vet that their dog's been vaccinated. We will continue to send them notices to get them to license their dog. So hopefully, the purpose of this thing would be to ease the burden on dog owners and get them licensed so that we can keep up their records and help people that happen to be bit by dogs. The tax system upgrade will certainly give us the ability to do improvements in payments and billing that we want to do much more easily. So for example, paperless billing, those kind of things will be much more easily done in the new system than in our existing system. We will have an improved cap functionality. It will look more modern, maybe even get a little pay-by-text. So those are the kind of things that we're looking for in the future.
Thank you very much, Ms. De La Pava. Appreciate it greatly. Maybe there's a market opportunity for an automatic pet reader to help with the dog licenses. We can come up with something. All right, Mr. De Feranti.
On the banking RFP, there's a, just to be sure I got this right, 400,000 annually in savings is what resulted. And is there a term on that, or no?
Well, I can't remember off the top of my head the contract terms, but I think the banking terms are like five years. And that was not just, it was banking, it was also custodial agreements that we have, lockbox agreements. We were able to get savings on all of those different types. It wasn't just our main bank savings.
Great, that's helpful. I just had one other question on the tax system upgrade. That's likely to lead to, it sounds like there's some level of, just as we discussed with the clerk of the court, there'll be level of service improvements that might be possible. You mentioned text or efficiencies in terms of how things work?
No, it actually is, we had to negotiate, and we did this with the DTS, negotiate the lowest possible price for this upgrade, and it's an exact like-for-like. There will be no enhancements that are allowed. It will have to mirror exactly the functionality that we currently have. What will happen from, once we get into that technology, is, you know, upgrades that we will have three programmers on, we have three programmers located within, contracted programmers within DTS that help us with fixes and improvements and maintenance. We will be able to get to improvements much more easily. So that's a good thing. And hopefully, we'll keep up on our patches and all that kind of stuff that we've done to keep the wheels on, so to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Garvey.
Yeah, so we have a new banking arrangement. Is it the same bank, though? Is it still Wells Fargo?
It is. They just pay us a lot less.
Yeah, well done on that. And can you sort of just generally how it works with our funds? We get interest on the money that they hold for us, right? But there's some limit, like, on how we can do it. I always got a little confused about, there were state limits on the interest that we, like, couldn't do or something.
Well, the way it works is we have an earnings credit for monies that are kept there overnight. And our earnings credit is, right now, a fraction of what we could get in money market funds, for example, or overnight things. One of the things that was in the RFP is a sweep functionality that we have just instituted, and we can now sweep the funds out every night and get a real rate of return instead of just the earnings credit of like 55 basis points. There was a time in 2008 that the earnings credit was higher than what we could get in the market, and we kept a lot of money in the bank. But for our purposes now, we sweep it out and get overnight money. So we should be, that 400,000 does not speak to the additional interest income we might get for that change in process for us.
Okay, great, thank you. And I want to thank you just again for the work you've done to help sort of our most vulnerable and figure out how we can help them. That's really just a wonderful story. Thanks.
Thank you. One of the things we work on really hard is advocacy for taxpayers. They need that, too.
You're going to give tax collectors a good image. Thank you.
That's it.
We'll get you out on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
And we'll invite up to the front our Commonwealth's attorney. Good afternoon, Ms. Stamos. How are you? All right, the seat should be nice and warm for you. All right.
I do want to read to you our mission statement. I think it's important. So justice is not measured by the number of convictions. Justice is measured by doing the right thing. The Office of the Commonwealth's Attorney continues to make use of alternative sentencing and diversion programs, but our core mission remains the same, is unchanged, the principle of prosecution of criminal defendants and the vigorous protection of victims' rights. And I think that's an important mission, and it's a mission that we take seriously every day. And I will also say, as a brief editorial, that my prosecutors are indeed ministers of justice, and it's a mantle that we take on and embrace with full hearts every day. So with that prelude, you know, we have submitted our documents. A couple of things I want to bring to the attention of the board. You know, the opioid drug crisis is still extant in our community. It's a concern for all of us. We have been working on a number of initiatives, certainly our partnering with the Arlington Addiction and Recovery Initiative, which was an outgrowth of a town hall that we had, simultaneously with a town hall that we had back in October of 2017, that generated a lot of interest in our community, the concern for drug use, especially among our young people. So that initiative has been up and running, and there's a lot of collaboration. We're hoping to announce some initiatives that I think will benefit our community in the very near future. I can't speak to them right now. But our office has been very involved in those efforts. The Drug Court that we started back in 2011 after my election is in its seventh year and doing good work. It doesn't do as much work as we would like to see occur because of some structural problems, meaning mostly it's only available to Arlington residents. And many of our offenders, as you know, are not even Virginia residents, let alone Arlington residents. So that's sort of a structural problem. Going forward with Drug Court, because Alexandria now has a Drug Court online that they didn't have previously, Fairfax County has a Drug Court. Judge Di Matteo and I have had discussions about perhaps when those entities are fully up and running, that maybe there'd be some collaboration among the three jurisdictions by way of an MOU to sort of break down those barriers so that folks from various jurisdictions might be able to go to a different Drug Court. That's a very inchoate idea, but we're talking about it, and I'd like to see that going forward. So those are some overview. Additionally, we are very pleased and proud of the Sexual Assault Response Team protocol that our, I just came from our SART meeting, which took place on the 10th floor of the courthouse. It includes, it's a multidisciplinary team that's mandated by our state code, only meet once a year. But because our SART is as active as it is, we do meet twice a year, and then there are breakout meetings during the course of the year. And one of our deliverables last year was our protocol, which I'm happy to say, and of course, Katie Crystal was instrumental in the development of that as well, that has been a model for the Commonwealth. I have shared it with my colleagues, all 120 Commonwealth attorneys throughout the Commonwealth, to great reception and review, and we're very proud of it. It really is a great example of the collaboration in Arlington in dealing with sexual assault prosecutions, investigations, dealing with victims, and I commend it to you. I'm sure you all have seen some of the good news about the Ask for Angela campaign that's been out in the news recently. That's a byproduct of the Restaurant Initiative that my office is very involved in with the training. Our Director of Victim Witness, Autumn Jones, along with Corporal Mastorus from the Police Department, are a wonderful team that goes out into the community, into our bars and restaurants, to inform bar staff, bouncers, bartenders, you know, how to deal with potentially difficult situations that some of their patrons may find themselves in. And then the Ask for Angela feature is the sort of code word, the safe word, so to speak, for extricating someone from what might be a dangerous or difficult situation. So we're excited about that, and that initiative is continuing to bear fruit. I'll point out also some of our mental health initiatives that we're working on, including a development of a behavioral health docket. I know Judge O'Brien is in the court, here today to talk a little bit about their, I'm not sure he's going to talk about that, but it's a feature that we're working on, and we have been working on for a long time. There is a misapprehension that, you know, we don't have a mental health court or a mental health docket, but the features of those two things have always been extant in the work that we do. So to perhaps formalize it some more, we're looking at the development of this docket. And I will also say that I have recently reached out to the Bureau of Justice Assistance, the National Training and Technical Assistance Center, to get information, for them to do an assessment in my office, and also what kind of resources we have in our community to be able to do more with less. We know there's not going to be a whole lot more money coming our way for this, but, so we've reached out for some help to see, you know, how can we perfect these initiatives without having to come to you all and ask for more money? So I think that would be a good thing, and hopefully, that'll bear some fruit. And then finally, I'll just talk a little bit about some of the, and Lisa can speak to the more specific questions you might have about the budget. We did, I also want to point out that my office was selected to be the site of a new, by the Virginia State Police, a fraud, insurance fraud prosecutor that will be housed in our office but will serve the jurisdictions of Fairfax, Loudoun, Prince William, and Alexandria. And the county was, there was a comp board position that did not include benefits, but with the graciousness of you all, we were able to take on this person who will start April 15th, and the benefits are being paid by Arlington County. And the reason why that makes sense to us is because while there is, you know, insurance fraud afoot in the land, it's not something that necessarily would occupy a full-time position. So with that, that prosecutor will be added to our rotation to be able to also do work on behalf of the citizens of Arlington exclusively. So as I say, that position will go into effect April 15th, and we'll see just how much work that entails, but we're happy to have been selected. And I think it's a testimony to the work of our office and Evy Eastman, our Deputy Commonwealth Attorney, who's been very active for many years in insurance fraud presentation and working with that industry to combat, you know, that particular crime. And then kind of doing more with less, that's what we always do. We really do. I think you folks know how hard my office works. You know, they're a dedicated, hard-working group of lawyers who have a tremendous amount of dedication to the rule of law, to doing what's right, to ensuring not only that public safety is adhered to, but victims and witnesses of crime are protected. And just as important, and also as important, is the rights of criminal defendants are adhered to. And, you know, we don't ever take that for granted, and it's part of a three-legged approach that we have in my office to criminal justice. I will also point out that, surprisingly and unhappily, we are simultaneously prosecuting four homicide cases. We did have, as you know, two last year and then two at the beginning of this year, and it just so happens that they are all coming to, you know, to the table at the same time. That's a pretty big task for an office my size, given the fact that we don't, you know, we continue to do all the other work that we do every single day. But we'll do it because we're good at our work and we're very dedicated. I will say, I was happy to read in The Post a couple of weeks back that the body-worn camera situation is, I think, on the back burner. You know, that is a very costly undertaking. It would require a whole lot more resources for my office to be able to comply with our ethical obligations, having to look at all that footage. It's a real issue around the state. I know my colleagues throughout the state who do have that technology in their offices. It's just, they are slammed with the work. And it's, you know, keeping up with being able to provide, according to our ethical responsibilities, the exculpatory evidence that may be embraced in that footage is a real issue. You know, but if they come my way, I suppose that we'll deal with it when it comes, but my understanding is that right now, it's on the back burner, and, you know, that's probably not a bad thing as far as resources go. So with that, I think I'll stop talking. If you have any questions.
Sure. Thank you very much, Ms. Stamos. Questions, starting with Mr. Gutschall.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stamos. I appreciate it. What I would like to ask about is, we've received several emails, and I imagine you're probably familiar with this individual, who is making the case that if we were more fully following a diversion-first kind of strategy, and perhaps along the lines of what Fairfax County does and other jurisdictions do, that we would be able to, that there's some cost savings. Not only would we perhaps be better serving the individuals and the community, but that there would be, in particular, some cost savings. Could you just speak generally to your view of the diversion-first strategy and how we do that in Arlington, and whether or not there are any potential for cost-saving strategies there?
Well, I'm not sure what that means, diversion-first. I mean, certainly, you know, our Crisis Intervention Team training, which is something that the Police Department works on and my office is involved in the training, is a diversion-first feature in Arlington. So I think that's important for folks to know that, you know, when there is an individual who may be suffering from a mental health episode, who also may be involved in a particular offense, our police officers will respond to the scene, de-escalate a situation, and make an assessment, and often not bring a lower-level charge and take them to the hospital for screening. So that's, they don't go into the criminal justice system in instances like that. So that's a diversion-first, a true diversion-first method. But I'm not sure I know.
Is that only in the mental health context?
Yes, yes.
Is that for drug offenses or for other nonviolent offenses?
Well, we do do diversion by way of statutory diversion, which is for first-defense marijuana possession. There is a 251 disposition. Also for first-defense felony, first-time felony offenses, it's diversion. You are prosecuted, but you end up not having a criminal conviction upon completion of certain conditions, probation and things of that nature. So, and those individuals, I mean, the cost of that, I mean, certainly to the individual, there's a cost. If they have to hire a lawyer, and the, you know, the psychic cost of being prosecuted, I can't speak to, but those individuals don't go to jail. There's no jailable element of that, so there's not a cost to that. But as far as diversion-first, you know, I think that, I'm not quite sure what Fairfax does along those lines.
Okay. Well, I know we're kind of pressed for time. It might be something, perhaps, I can share the email with you, and maybe if you want to respond.
Sure.
Thank you. Ms. Garvey.
I guess along the same lines, Theo, I don't know if you remember, but there was a young woman who, her aunt came to me because she was staying with her aunt, and she had been arrested, and it wasn't really mental health, but she was just totally in crisis and was sort of on schedule to end up in the legal system. And I talked to you, you got me to one of your attorneys who was handling it, and they took a look at it. And I just want to tell you, I just got to know for that young woman, I get emotional every time I talk about it. She's graduated from college, and she's got a job. And she thanks me, but it really was your office, which I tell her, and I really appreciate it, because I think we just saved that young woman's life. So, thank you.
Thank you, Libby. I mean, that story means a lot, and I will say, in my 31 years, there are a lot of stories like that. I mean, we do so much that people don't recognize that we're doing. I think I've been remiss in not promoting my office more, quite honestly, because we do a really good work and meaningful work for this community, and, you know, I thank you for the comment.
Mr. De Feranti.
Just to thank you for your work on opioids and also with Arm and Arm and other organizations that are seeking to address needs and help folks return and make it in Arlington. Question is about driver's license, and I think it's just important, you know, we're Dillon Rule, but also with respect to state criminal statutes, you've got an obligation there. But certainly, I think there's an equity and a fairness argument. If your driver's license is taken away in the course of a criminal proceeding, then you can't go to work. That's going to accentuate the difficulties. And if you, you know, I don't want to get into too much detail, but if you could kind of describe where you have discretion and where there's state law with respect to driver's license, that'd be great.
Sure. Unfortunately, there is not a lot of discretion. Most of the license suspensions are operation of law. So I have railed against the license suspension to our legislators. I was happy to be a part of Senator Evans' effort, which I was happy to be a part of Senator Evans' effort, which was successful, to eliminate the mandatory license suspension for first-defense marijuana. I personally think it's ridiculous that a drug offense conviction that has nothing to do with driving results in a mandatory license suspension of six months. I have said it before to my own delegate, Patrick Hope, and others who will listen and they by and large agree. I think that's being revisited now by the General Assembly. I call it getting into DMV hell because people end up getting their license suspended for, you know, a non-driving offense. You know, they've got other things on their mind, they don't get reinstated when they should, they don't pay the reinstatement fee, their license is technically suspended, they're late for work, they run a red light, they get stopped, their license is suspended. It's ridiculous. So I would fully support that. We don't have much discretion in when, you know, even when you, with fines and costs. I mean, it's, the DMV was doing that. Judges can't prevent it from happening, the Commonwealth attorney can't prevent it from happening, so our hands are really tied. It's not something that I think is a meaningful sanction and I think it should be looked at, but we really can't do a lot about it unfortunately.
Great, thanks. And it also helps clarify that the legislature is the place where there would need to be change in that area.
Yes, yes, indeed.
Thank you. To get you out on this, just more of a comment, I wish you great success in developing a more formal behavioral health docket. I think it's really important work as we've seen across many of our constitutional functions as well as public safety agencies, the primary presenting characteristic for a lot of what are now treated as criminal offenses or serious, is serious mental illness. And, you know, certainly from a therapeutic standpoint and from a future life chance standpoint, the better option is not criminal prosecution and ultimately detention, but therapy. So, you know, I realize that we kind of have a system where you have a budget, you have an office, and you have to work within those resources, but when you think about the system at large, it's much more costly for us to treat people with serious mental illness as, through criminal detention versus through outpatient therapy. So while I get that you have cost pressures, hopefully we can figure out a way to not have that be an impediment behind doing what we need to do for people who primarily present with behavioral health issues. So with that, thank you very much. We appreciate your engaging in the speed dating round with us and we'll see you soon. Next up, we have our Office of the Magistrate, and I understand we have a retirement there. So do we have anyone here today? Oh, we do have, Mr. Adam. We got to do this more frequently than once every year. Welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Adam, good to see you.
Thank you for having me. I know we're a very small part of your budget, so make it short and sweet. I won't read through everything. I'm sure you can read that. The key point to this is our office operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. When you guys are home.
Could you pull your microphone just a bit closer?
When you guys are home, we are, one of us or more of us are at work. Tonight there'll be someone when you guys are sound asleep. Next time you're on a holiday or on a vacation, one or more of us will be working. We handle all sorts of things, criminal, mental health, medical detentions, and along with other things I have not gone into. We also collaborate with the other entities that you're dealing with today and other days on various programs, including ways to divert mentally ill people who get involved in the criminal justice system through the magistrate post booking project. CSP also has a program where they divert people at the bonding stage and we help them by flagging people and getting them information about people that are not able to divert at our stage, but that we put it on their radar to divert at the next stage. Next, please. One thing I'm going to say about that is you mentioned there was a retirement. That was a previous chief magistrate who then became a regional supervisor and still had some activities in Arlington and his retirement took his supplement away, which was a large chunk of the savings you're seeing. There's only two people left out of nine of us in the office who get the supplement and with any luck, neither of us will be going away for a while. The only other thing I'm going to say about that is Arlington provides us with equipment and other needed things in our office. We have not asked for anything major in a number of years. A lot of our equipment is getting old and dying on us. They had to totally gut our fax and copier machine a few days ago. Xerox had to come out and they couldn't repair it. They had to just take all the innards out and replace it. Several of our chairs have broken because they've been, they're many years in the old and as I said, our office operates 24/7. There's someone sitting in those chairs 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And so there may be a time in the near future I'm pleading for a little more money to get furniture or other such things so that we're not sitting on the floor. Next, please. You can see the figures have changed somewhat. Part of it was a few years ago when we talked, we had originally only been including those processes that show up on our computer. There's a number of things we do that are not on a computer. I know that sounds old school, but once I started tabulating those, our figures changed. And also, we've been required to hold other types of hearings that we had been previously holding and drafting other documents that are, you know, statutes requiring us to do now, so those things have jumped. My projections do not, as far as figures, do not include any, since there is no way of factoring in what the impact of Amazon moving to our area is. In many ways, it's going to be quite positive, but any increase in population increases the number of criminal matters and also the number of mental health matters, which I'll go through our office. And also, anything that's controversial will attract people with mental illness and with criminal intent. So I do suspect there will be an uptick, at least for a while, of those types of matters above and beyond what I have listed there. And I believe that is all I have to say and I'll let you guys ask questions. I know it's a tiny budget and I don't wish to spend too much of your time since other people need to get to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Adam. We appreciate it. Clearly, if there were an award for doing the most with least, at least from us and the general fund, you'd be a prime candidate for, be a recipient of that. Along those lines, Mr. Manager, you know, the whole idea that anyone would have to deal with broken chairs, I assume that as part of the courthouse renovation, we could figure out to maybe take care of the pretty modest needs?
We won't have to wait that long.
Okay, great.
We, this is the first I've heard of it and we absolutely have a way to deal with it and so Richard will give you the check on the way out.
Great. See, look at that. Business gets done efficiently. Ms. Garvey.
I'm just going to follow up and encourage you, moving forward. You don't have big requests, but do talk to us before the chair breaks. You know, you may be very small, but you're absolutely crucial 24/7, so we do want to hear and I think the manager does too, if you've got some things coming. So, but we don't know because we don't get to your office, which is probably a good thing.
Yeah, I was going to say that, you're welcome to come down, but I'm glad you don't have to come down.
Yep. Although maybe I will when you get those chairs so we can take a look. But yeah, I just encourage you to, you know, do ask for what you need, so thank you. Yeah.
All right.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right. Moving right along, we're going to invite Mr. Conklin et al. to come up. We're going to have our juvenile and domestic relations district court functions up. Oh, we have judges as well. Oh my goodness, we've got the full crew.
Not too many, don't worry.
We might need more chairs. It's all right, it's all right. We're happy to see all of you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is George Rudesis and I guess I'm the senior person here because I've come to this session over 20 years now. And Jay Faset and I were going neck and neck, but he left first. And Judge Robb, my colleague, we're non-supplemented state employees, so we don't have to, well, we're not asking for anything specific, but we want to thank you for all the services that we get in helping us do our job. And we really are fortunate to be in Arlington County. So Mr. Conklin is the Director of Court Services. He does an excellent job. He has excellent staff. Some of them are here today. Judge Robb and I are here to answer any questions you have and Mr. Conklin knows more about the details of the budget. Judge Robb?
Well, I think we're all very excited about the opening of Safe Havens in the community. It's the supervised visitation and exchange program. It's currently funded by the Office on Violence Against Women, U.S. Department of Justice grant. And we have families there. It's been very, very helpful because too often when folks come into court, especially with domestic violence, and some of the folks are lower income, if you really feel that the safety of the child is going to be jeopardized, you are typically going to ask for either supervised visitation or something like that. And it's really cost prohibitive if you go through private services. You know, parents are having to pay $75 an hour to just see their kid because of the domestic violence in the home. So this is an invaluable tool for our county. Judge Rudesis and I make referrals to that program and then they're interviewed for the appropriateness, so it's very helpful. And I think that Mr. Conklin can also address, we've, are working on a certificate program through Georgetown University to reduce racial and ethnic disparity in the juvenile justice system. And we were able to have a ten-member team that included both Judge Rudesis, myself, Mr. Conklin. We had a representative from the police department. We had a representative from the public defender's office, a representative from the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, school personnel, director of behavioral health, and the foster care person. So it's, we're required to meet regularly, develop a plan on how we're going to implement this, and obviously the goal is to make sure that all of the young people that come before the community are treated equally and fairly.
Thank you so much, Judge Robb, Judge Rudesis, and then we'll turn it over to Mr. Conklin, I guess, for the presentation.
Yes. Good afternoon. Let me introduce a couple of folks that came along. Rick Strobock is our deputy director and Espinoza Smith just was promoted to the management specialist position to handle our financial affairs, so she's here to observe. And then I wanted you to meet Caitlin Tracy, who is our intake supervisor and is largely responsible for a lot of progress we've made on reducing our use of detention for kids and for diverting kids from the court system. So I wanted you to.
By the way, Earl, we're not able to introduce you to our new clerk of court, Renika Larki, who's at a mandatory training in Richmond today.
All right.
So before we leave, the slide that's here, there's some familiar faces up there.
Got a quarrel, it looks like.
Just to run over what we do in juvenile court services, you can see on this slide, it lists our main functions. Judges' chambers, as Judge said, the salaries of the judges are paid by the court, but everything else comes from the county, the facilities. There's an executive assistant that's, county provides, and all the supplies and training and other things that the judge needs, some of those things are provided by the county and the clerk's office as well. Clerk gets a supplement from the county to make it a living wage for their staff to work. Juvenile intake, probation, and parole are mandated services. That is the core of what court service unit is to do under the Code of Virginia. Intake, as I mentioned, is the process by which court cases initiated for juvenile court on a juvenile or a family matter. Detention orders, police, child welfare, they're petitioners that come to intake, which determines probable cause and assist petitioners. Probation and parole are supervision of youth. Probation is when the judge places them on probation rather than in detention or other services and parole is for kids that are released from a juvenile correctional center back into Arlington or another jurisdiction and we supervise them. We have an adult probation unit, which provides supervision over adults, largely domestic violence offenders, who are residing in the county and before our court. And then we have this group of programs, our two group homes, Argus and Aurora. Aurora House is in Falls Church, Argus House is here in Roslyn, Boys and Girls Group Homes. They've done some new innovative programming. Both have added independent living services, so they're taking, one change that's happened to our programs is we do not view them as court programs exclusively. They are county programs, DHS, mental health, other agencies within the county. Even parents have made placements in our program, so we're doing some things a little differently. Our after-school programs, Girls Outreach and Young Achievers, I will put a plug in that we need space for Young Achievers. Crammed in at Argus House into space, capped at eight because of the space limitations. We have capacity to expand that, but we need a larger space.
And if I could just interject on that, Mr. Conklin, the Young Achievers program has a waiting list and we really could use more space so that we could service more children that really need that kind of a program, so.
Talk just a little bit about what the program does.
Boys come by Arlington County Public School bus every day after school. They arrive around 2:30 or 3 o'clock. They do many of the things that would be done in a group home setting, but it is not residential, so it's Monday through Friday after school. Much more cost-effective for those kids that do not need to be removed from home. We want to keep them with their parents. And so they do skill building, they do homework, they support, they develop goals that are established by the probation office and the judges. We do a risk assessment for every youth that gets placed on probation that identifies areas of risk. And for instance, if school is not a risk area, we don't focus on that anymore. You know, we stay away from the areas where kids are successful and focus on the areas what we call now is criminogenic need. So if it's, if it's a, the way youth relates to friends, if that's an area of high need or family, that's where the goals are. So probation officers develop those goals through a standardized assessment and that's what everybody works on, whether it's the probation officer or our programs, targeting those areas where youth needs or where they have low protective factors. So either we develop protection in areas such as using our mentoring program, if they have low family support, they need a caring, consistent adult, we have a new mentoring program that we can refer kids to and they participate in that, so.
So when we ask for services for programs for the upfront, really in the long run, by providing those programs, you're saving money and we're all saving money in the long run.
And you need more space. Is that what you said?
Just for the Boys program. So we started as a pilot a few years ago. It's inside the Argus House Boys Group Home. So it's, they use an area that used to be used for groups and other things by the group home. We started it there and we need to expand into some bigger space.
Okay, thank you, it's good to know.
It's on our wish list, you know. We are not complaining. We're so happy to have the program. Argus House is a wonderful facility. The county maintains it extremely well, but that is an area that if we had more space, we could serve more kids and we have a waiting list and it keeps kids from having to go into a residential program, so. And then our detention diversion electronic monitoring programs are also operated by our court. This are alternatives to putting kids in detention. So our goal is not to put kids in detention, juvenile detention, that don't need to be there. It is a priority in our transformation efforts and these two tools allow them to remain at home with being monitored by the probation officer on a daily basis. On our gang prevention and intervention efforts, you're familiar with some of those. Mr. Vilches is not here today. I know you miss him. We miss him too. He's in leadership training. But that's a prevention program largely. The kids we serve through our soccer tournaments are by and large not kids that are involved in juvenile court yet. We believe some of the reasons we have lower gang problems in Arlington County than are some of our neighbors are because of some of the prevention efforts. The schools are not shy about picking up the phone, making a call to Tito, saying they've got a youth that just arrived in the country, they're worried about him, he's associating and they know he's not disconnected, and immediately he's involved in some individual intervention, his parents get some help. Sometimes it's with police, you know, going to. Sometimes it's with police, you know, going to do a friendly home visit to the parents if there are concerns about, it just, it works well. And we also have school, in partnership with the school, we're running groups at the schools for groups of kids that are, have elevated gang risk, and that's in partnership with all the people that are involved in our Gang Task Force. So the prosecutors will come and talk about some things. It's just a very helpful, makes the kids feel important, like they're part of the community, we care about them. We're not waiting for them to get in trouble, and we're not looking for them to get in trouble. We're trying to give them support because we know they're at risk. So then our truancy committee, we divert the majority of our truancy, initial referrals from the schools on truancy get diverted. We always give an option to try and deal with those cases in nonjudicial ways. It has a success rate of over 80%, so it's very successful, and it works extremely well. Our mentoring program is also, sometimes, you know, the group of kids getting mentored is mostly prevention cases. They've been identified and targeted by, you know, somebody that's been referred to a mentoring program because they have some risk and some needs. And so we don't wait for them to become court-involved. So I think our cases in juvenile court are down. They're trending down over the years, and it's because there's a lot of good work going on, not just by juvenile court, but by the schools and DHS in identifying needs and responding to them. I just want to mention about our mentoring program. We just got a $25,000 donation. Fifteen of it is going to go to our mentoring program to support a monthly activity for mentors and mentees, and $10,000 will go towards our Gang Task Force Soccer Tournament. So we're really happy to get that donation. So next slide is really just the initiatives we're working on. Some of them have been mentioned. The risk-based supervision, I've already talked about, trying to keep kids out of detention that don't truly need to be in detention. And we have a good assessment tool to help us identify who should be there. The judges are, the judges lead that effort in not putting youth in detention that don't need to be there. Sometimes we want them to put kids there, then they don't. That's more of a, you know, kind of another issue on the other side of the issue, but they, I would say, right now, you know, we are doing a great job of keep, we have six kids in detention today. I checked the number before I came over. Alexandria has a lower number also. The facility's built for 70. The detention center has, you know, gotten some other state programs to fill some of the beds because there's unused capacity by the jurisdictions now. So...
Although some of the difficulties with the youth, some of the youth that are in the detention facility, it's because they're from, they're young people from other, outside of Arlington County. They're outside of the Commonwealth of Virginia. They're from Maryland and DC. And some of these diversion programs that we would otherwise offer to them because of what they're, what brought them to court, we can't offer to them because they're not residents of the county.
Thank you.
All of our services are doing a good job of incorporating evidence-based programming and services into what we do. So probation, intake, diversion, all of those things, our group homes, they all have elements that are evidence-based, and we're happy to see that direction. The, I don't know if this cup's been used yet or not. The judge mentioned our racial and ethnic disparity certificate program. Primary focus of that is to reduce probation violations among kids, because we know that that's what often is what plunges them deeper into the juvenile justice system, leads to more detention, leads to more placements in the state correctional centers. So we think if we can work on reducing those and making the numbers more equitable, then we'll see an impact on the overall system. So I think that's, we're excited about that. But that's just the tip of the iceberg. The group of people that are working on this are committed to working on the system. So this may be our capstone project for that, but I think we've got a long list of other items we hope to tackle.
And Mr. Conklin, I'm going to have to speed you up a little bit so that we can...
I think, you know, the Safe Havens program we've spoken about. I think that's generally where we are. Next page, you know, I think the numbers are what they are. We have a low 2% increase in our expenditures, bringing in a little bit more revenue from our group home changes. Reductions, next page, really have to do with revenue that we're getting through, we're leveraging additional state revenue in both of our group homes. We expect that to lead to reduced reliance on county funding. That's what you're seeing in that reflection. And then the last page, you know, I was just talking about the Safe Havens grant. We may, you know, that expires in 2020. County's going to have to make a decision at some point. We expect to apply for continuation grant, three-year continuation grant. If it is available, we will certainly apply. I'm optimistic that if we apply, we'll get it. But those, these days, there's some variables there. So that's it.
Thank you very much. And since your budget from year to year is not changing significantly, about $100,000 and a half in FTE, I'm going to move forward and ask colleagues if we have some larger questions about the great work that the, that Mr. Conklin and the judges are doing that we put them in writing because, or actually even better, I invite you to invite Mr. Conklin in because it's truly fascinating to look at how our approach is comprehensive and evidence-based and really delivering great outcomes.
I was just going to do a thank you, because I've been doing this for seven or, I think this might be my eighth, and it's like, it's better every year. I mean, it's a big change, and I'm just delighted with the work you're doing, and it makes me feel great about our county. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming this afternoon. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks.
All right. Next up, our registrar, Linda Lindberg. Short timer that you are.
Yeah.
The last time we'll have the occasion to have you sit at this table to do a budget briefing.
That's right.
And we didn't get you anything. Hopefully you don't, oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I forgive you.
Okay, thank you.
I am flying solo today, as you've noticed. My deputy, Gretchen Reinmeier, is in the Ukraine doing election observation for the Organization for Cooperation and Security in Europe. And I mention that because she's the one who put together this terrific slide presentation, and I wanted to make sure I do her justice. So without any further ado, we've had, we've seen a lot of growth in voting in the past couple of years, particularly since 2016. And if you go to that first slide, please, here's a photo of us doing absentee voting with all the voters lined up in front of our office, right down the hall in the third floor. 2018 was significant, was a very significant year. Next slide, please. What is significant about this, and if you would look at the graphic up on the active presentation, this is, this shows you midterm election turnouts since, oh, 2006. It just scrolls through and shows you how we have increased in our by-mail voters, the little envelopes, the in-person absentee, which are the orange people, and the Election Day voting, although it doesn't seem to be working now, does it? It did to begin with. Anyhow, it does increase as we go from 2016 to 2010, 2014, and 2018. But 2018 was significant in that it did have the, a record turnout for midterm election. That, of course, wasn't just for Arlington, it was across the nation. We had the highest turnout ever. Our registration increased by 57% compared to 2014, going back four years. And there's been a continued interest in pre-Election Day voting with a significant whopping 235% increase in people who are voting by mail, absentee by mail, and 169% increase for in-person absentee voting compared to 2014. And we see that as only continuing to grow in the years to come. And these are the things that we wish to highlight for you in this budget presentation. On the next slide, we've got a more hand-to-hand comparison between 2014 with the actual numbers and 2018. So you can see graphically how that's increased and how that has grown since, in the last four years. And the good thing about this is that the number of little gray guys has decreased, which means that there are more people voting, and that's always a good thing. So just the basic budget changes on the following slide. Pretty basic for this year. As you know, this is the year in our budget cycle which has the least electoral interest, has the lowest turnout. It's unfortunate, but that's the way it is. So this isn't a particularly onerous year for us. We don't expect to have any significant issues in the 2020 budget, some standard personnel increases, of course, with the exception of that presidential primary, which does need to be thrown into this budget cycle. It'll be next March, March 3 of 2020 will be the presidential primary. And we have, what we've done is we've included funding both for expenses for the primary and for a revenue reimbursement, because we know that we get some money back from the state. The projections that we've done have been based on, like, the 60% reimbursement that we received four years ago in 2016. This may change a little bit depending on the actual expenses, because basically what happens is the state gets a pot of money, and then all the localities submit their expenses, and they have to distribute it appropriately. So these are approximate. We think it's probably going to be pretty close. Of course, we don't know at this point in time whether it will be just a Democratic primary or a dual primary, and that could make a difference, too. In any case, we expect it to be a big turnout primary next March. Key budget considerations. Early voting is coming. Finally, and it is law, the governor signed the bills for early voting just last week on Thursday. So that means early voting, or some people are calling no reason absentee voting, this will begin next November. It's effective in 2020 with the November 2020 election, beginning the eight days before the election. So it'll be just like absentee voting, except people will come in and they won't have to fill out a form and tell us why they're voting absentee, just like on Election Day, which is the way, in my opinion, in-person absentee voting should be for the whole period, but we'll take every little baby step that we can in making things better for our voters.
Is that in-person only?
It's only for in-person. By-mail voting will still require voters to give a reason. So our concerns are, this facility, you saw that line in that first, in that first slide, which is down the hall in our office, and this slide shows a picture of when we moved downstairs in a presidential election and used the conference rooms on the first floor. This is tight. That particular room, which is the best space that we have available in this facility, is smaller than most of our polling places on Election Day, yet we process more voters in a single day on Saturdays in particular. Before the election, we process more voters there than we do at most of our polling places on Election Day. So this is a real concern for us, particularly as we grow, and there's still the unknowns about the renovation project and how that might affect us. And we have a bullet here that says ADA concerns within this building. That's not to say that we believe that this building is not ADA compliant. It certainly is. It's just for our purposes, it's not particularly ADA-friendly. First of all, there is a parking issue, and it's hard for people to find parking close by to the entrance to the building. Even if a voter who has mobility issues is dropped off, then they have to make their way all the way down the hall on the first floor, go up the elevator, go all the way down the hall on the third floor to get to our office. That's not particularly friendly either. And we have had some concerns expressed to us by people within the community, not so much the voters, but, you know, we're concerned, and it's people who assist our voters who have disabilities. So these are some concerns of ours. And of course, staffing. We have 6.6 FTEs, permanent FTEs. That should be clarified that that is permanent. We have 1.8 FTEs that are for temporary. The last increase we had in FTEs was in 2005. Well, certainly, registration has gone up since then, the population of the county has gone up, number of polling places, number of people voting, yet we have remained constant. Now, to be fair, we have had some process, some of our processes have become more automated in our office, such as the online registration, which has helped a lot and made us a lot more efficient. So we perhaps don't need to proportionally increase as much, but we haven't increased at all since 2005. We are not asking for any increases in this particular budget year because, first of all, the guidelines that we were given made us feel that this was not exactly the appropriate time. Plus, like I said, this is the low turnout year. We think we'll be okay this year. Next year is a different story, but we're just laying the groundwork here so that we can look towards trying to resolve some of these issues for next year. The next slide is our biggest concern, which is the increase in vote by mail. Remember that 239, 235% from 2014. By mail, there is, we can, we can identify a direct cost for every ballot that we send by mail, both in terms of the labor and the materials that we have. It's a little different for in-person voting, because if more people, if fewer people vote on Election Day and decide to come and vote before Election Day, be it in-person absentee, before the early voting period, or during the early voting period, it's still people that are voting in person. So really, we're shifting the costs from the polls on Election Day to pre-Election Day, which has its own set of concerns. But it's harder to quantify that particular number. The by-mail ballots, though, we can quantify, because there's definitely a staffing need to process those ballots. And the fact of the matter is, we've outgrown our space. And I don't know what the solution is. But this is a dialogue that we have to start having to talk about what we're going to be able to do moving forward. This particular photo, you see, we've taken over Room 311 on the presidential election days, presidential election years, because we just cannot handle this kind of volume in our suite. The last slide, we've given you some of those costs. We've broken down some of those costs for a by-mail ballot. And we've determined that, on average, it costs about $6.50 to mail a ballot to every person who wishes to vote by mail. The requests by mail are increasing because now voters can request a ballot online, making it easier. They register to vote online, and right next to that is, apply for an absentee ballot. Oh, great, I'll do that. So we get a lot of people requesting mailed ballots who might have voted anyway, either in person or at the polls, either in-person absentee or at the polls, but they find it easy to have the ballot mailed to them. It does involve a great deal of labor, both at the beginning and end of the processes, and that's the biggest cost. There are obviously some material costs for the envelopes and the materials, and postage is actually a small portion of that. So what we wanted to, to make sure that you're aware to bring to your attention are these concerns for the increase in absentee voting, both by mail and in person, and what the limitations we are in trying to address those issues. So with that, I'm open for questions.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Lindberg. Mr. Difanti?
First, thank you for your years of service and also your professionalism throughout. It's, absolutely appreciate that. So Open Door Mondays, the last two weeks, I've gotten questions about the FTE, and I wanted to sort of, certainly where the budget was last November and where the budget is now. Folks have talked with me about a .6 of an FTE, or the part-time employee. I don't know if you have comments on that.
Yes, absolutely. What we have requested in previous years is to convert our .6 FTE, permanent FTE, to one FTE, a full-time FTE. The cost of that is basically nothing, because this individual, this incumbent, is working 40 hours a week as it is. And that's why we've asked for that to be converted. He is classified in a position where he is a 24-hour-a-week employee, and he works 40. So the cost of converting it to a full-time FTE is small. It's just that the FTE numbers would have to be allocated to our department.
Got it. Okay. I don't know if there, I just have one other.
Go ahead.
So satellite voting, and, you know, as we think about the primary in March of next year, I know there's background that, there's been discussion of satellite voting before, and I'm wondering if the question has been asked, or if you have thoughts as to whether starting that in 2019 on a limited basis for just, say, four or five days? The discussion, as I understand it, has been about two or three weeks with high costs and stress on your employees. Is that something that you would recommend? Is that something that you would recommend? You know, is a trial useful in 2019 because of the law, to sort of get used to that? I, I certainly, in 2020, will, will think that is, there's a lot of merit to that.
Definitely on the table for, for the 2020, well, 2020 November election. So that'd be the 2021. We would certainly be open to looking at some cost projections to implement it on a, on a limited basis for the primary in the, the presidential primary. Don't think it's necessary for every election, such as a June primary, which has a low turnout. But for a presidential primary, yes, it could be helpful, particularly if, even if we only did it on the Saturdays, like the last two Saturdays before the election, that would certainly have some costs, but it wouldn't be quite as onerous as, as stretching it out for a couple of weeks.
Great, thanks. I'm also think, thinking long-term about sort of the induced, if folks know that they can vote early, there may be some additional votes in off-years, but thanks very much.
All right. And with that, I think some of the issues surfaced with the space needs and the, the budget needs, as well as your strategic plan, we need to convene as a board to think more fully about them than the time we'll allow for today. So I'm going to call us to a close. Thank you very much, Ms. Lindberg. And we will move on, and I think the General District Court is present. Colleagues, we're going to run a little bit over today. Is that okay with you? Okay, great, thanks.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Welcome back.
I'm Judge O'Brien. I'm the chief judge. This is Steve Spur, who was our clerk, and Brian Henshaw is joining us today as chief deputy, and Tara Piper is our administrative assistant, who's here as well.
Thank you all for joining us today, Judge O'Brien. Take it away.
All right. Well, as always, we like to thank you for the support that you provide to us as a court. Mr. Spur can address the numbers, but as an overview, where I think over the last few years, we'd seen traffic tickets down, we are seeing them on the rise now and anticipate that those are going to continue. Back in 2015, the numbers were in approximately 40, 54,000. Traffic tickets, 2016, that dropped to 38,000. And so back up in 2019, we're back up to 53, almost that number, and anticipate next year that that will increase as well. One of the questions that was asked earlier about license suspensions and how everyone is dealing with those, I think that's an important issue to bring up with you folks because you did raise it earlier. The, the Supreme Court had encouraged, and I think our court has always tried to do this, to help people who need to get their licenses reinstated, to help them get on payment plans. And there's, every day, we're seeing many, many people come in, both in traffic court and in criminal court, to get on payment plans. And they, they have the option of trying to do it with community service through either, typically, if they're living here, we'll try and have them do it through the sheriff's workforce or through the offender aid restoration, the OAR program. And the, whereas other jurisdictions will oftentimes require percentages down payments, I think as a group, we have tried to say, let's get people back on the right track. So somebody comes in and they say, I can pay $25 a month. I said, okay, what day of the month can you pay it? Let's set it up. And then you go to the clerk's office, and when you go down there, that clerk will explain to you what you need to do to go to the DMV to get your license reinstated. And so long as you stay on that plan, then your license will be valid. So I think that we've, we've certainly tried to help people who want to get their, and again, we're constrained, as I think you heard earlier. This is, this is done by, by the legislature, and hopefully that will, that will change, especially for the cases where it's fines and costs. We also, you also heard earlier about some of the mental health initiatives that are going on, and I have in fact been working with the, the folks from DHS and the forensic jail team to try and come up with our version of a behavioral health docket, and we're working together on that. The, there are so many other programs that have been put into place which are aiding in the diversion and the supervision of mentally ill who come into our courts, and the behavioral health docket would sort of be the end of it. We've got the magistrate's post booking, which if people are deemed to have certain mental health issues, they're evaluated by members of the forensic team, and then they, if they agree to the terms to be on supervised release, then when they go out into the community, they have to meet their meetings and go to supervised release and another way to avoid having to have people in jail when what they really need is to be out on the street in, in treatment. So those are a number of things that, that we have been engaged in, and I know that I bring them up because I think that they, you addressed those in your earlier questions and comments. So if you have any questions about our numbers, certainly direct those to Mr. Spur, and otherwise, I'm all ears.
Judge O'Brien, excellent. Thank you so much for being here earlier to follow our earlier conversation and address it substantively. We really appreciate it. All right. So do we have any questions? Or, Mr. Spur, do you want to walk us through the numbers at all?
Numbers are, well, they're, they're pretty small, aren't they?
Yeah, yeah.
So unless you have questions, I, I think not, probably. They sort of speak for themselves, and they, they tend to be small every year, and we try and be good stewards of what we do get from the county, and I think staff would tell you that most years, we do return something at the end of the year to you. And on behalf of my staff, again, I'd like to thank you for the county's generosity in supplying the salary supplements to staff.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for the good work in an ever-growing and complex county. So we know it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I see with our circuit court, I see Judge Di Matteo in the back. I don't know if there's anyone else joining you this afternoon, or you? You're solo today?
Solo.
All right.
Hopefully after the interview, good afternoon, everybody.
See? Judge Newman's in a trial today and has been for a day and a half, so we apologize for being here. Enjoyed coming to visit you all.
I'm not sure that's an acceptable excuse, right? Aren't there certain things that they get, continuances and things like that? They can?
It's a bit frowned upon.
Please give him, please give your fellow judges, including the chief judge, our regards, but we are pleased to have you here today.
Thank you very much. Nice to see you all. I don't think I'll take a lot of your time. Our budget is relatively small, but there are a couple of changes. Good to see you all. Couple of changes that we are asking you to make, and I think you all know, we have a fourth circuit court judge who is starting, and we're very excited to have Judy Wheat join our team. Excellent attorney and will be a marvelous judge. And so with that comes a little bit of support, namely another person. We rely very heavily on our law clerks. As you can tell from the submission, I can tell you personally, they, we have a very complex docket. We have a lot of cases, and juggling that in our electronic filing system isn't always the easiest thing to do. So they really help us stay on track. They also help us prepare for court and, and make sure that we have everything we need that's been properly filed, and even if it hasn't been, they track it down for us and get it to us. So that's really, really invaluable, and without a law clerk, really, it's very difficult to function and to be ready for court every day. So that's an invaluable addition to our budget, as you can see. Additionally, what else did I want to point out to you? Let me look at my little, little slides here. Here we go. That's what we're looking at, right? The one FTE, so that's basically it. So otherwise, not much of a change for you all. Of course, there are some attendant costs that go along with having another judge, just having some, you know, more supplies and things like these sorts of things that you can well imagine. On the next slide, please. Right, so you know what we do. I don't need to tell you all what we do. We are the highest trial court in Arlington. We hear appeals, we hear cases de novo from those courts, and we also hear cases that are filed directly with us. Everything you can basically handle in a trial court, we do it. Because of all that, we want to be on top of everything, and this is just a way for us to do it by having the, the resources that we're seeking with this budget in this cycle. Next slide, please. Oh, I thought there was a, was there not a drug court slide? I was going to tell you about drug court. Did we already pass it? Oh, there we go. So as you know, I'm the, the drug court judge, and we have continued with the support of the county, frankly, to operate the drug court. The drug treatment court is, just like you were talking earlier about the mental health or behavioral health court, it's not dissimilar from that. It's actually the model on which those other courts are based in general. We provide wraparound services to these participants. They are treated not only for substance use disorder, they are treated for mental illness, they are treated for other mental health conditions, they are, their housing is addressed, their employment is addressed, their job skills and training are addressed. Of course, we have folks living at the shelter, we have folks living in Independence House, we have folks living in Oxford houses, et cetera. We have supervision teams which ensure that they are where there's, these folks are where they're supposed to be, and doing what they're supposed to do. So this, this approach to substance use disorder and the, and the intersection of that with the criminal justice system is unique and very, what would I say, thorough, full, complete package kind of a way of looking at things. And so because of that, it's intensive and it's very staff-heavy. We have a therapist, we have a case manager, we have a coordinator, we have two community supervisors. Our probation office down the street supports our folks in the fifth phase of drug court, and that's when we're ramping folks down. And then, of course, there's me, and then there are two attorneys, the public defender is on the team and the commonwealth attorney is on the team. They're not paid for that work particularly, but they do that out of the kindness of their hearts, I imagine, and so do I, because that's not compensated as well. But I just wanted you to have sort of the flavor of the drug court, so you knew that. So we have continued to try to get as many people as we can in the program, but it's limited to Arlington County residents, as you know, for a variety of reasons, which means it's really quite low. We can't have any violent offenders in the program by statute, so there's some limitations on who can be in the program. I wish we could take more, but, and there are plenty of cases that look good on paper but don't pan out. So we're doing our best to keep those numbers up, so we have some place for folks to go that really need this kind of intensive treatment. We wanted to forecast, Judge Newman and I were talking about this, we wanted to forecast just a couple of things for you, possibly in the next few years, but it's important to know as you're sitting here today and looking at our budget, that, you know, we have a new employer coming to the county. We're very excited about that, of course, with Amazon, but at the same time, that's going to have some impact on our dockets, no doubt. New people in the county, new issues that may come up, and of course, a business, a very big business, that may likely file lawsuits and collections work or things like this. I don't, I can't anticipate what they're going to do, but business cases in the county. We should be aware of that, and we should be conscious of that. We already have a, we had a large number of filings in the past year and a half or two, even in the general district court as well, was a lending company that's doing a lot of collections work in our, in our court, and we have even set aside a docket a month just for those cases, to handle the large number of cases that are generated from that, so default judgment issues, collections, garnishments, things like this. So those, we would expect similar kinds of improvements in that, if you will, in our docket. Additionally, we may see a, a bubble of cases coming in. The lab, the state lab, has been very, very behind in their ability to test all the drugs that are being seized and people, you know, from possession and distribution cases in the state, and consequently, they're about six months behind. So I don't know if they're filling that gap by hiring another lab to fill the, you know, the logjam, if you will, fix the problem, but if that happens, and then we get a large number of cases, then we're going to see quite a, a dump of cases for trial and plea and disposition. So, or it may be sprinkled out, but clearly, there's a large, a huge number of drug cases in the state, as we all know, and, and it's affecting everybody. So I just wanted to forecast that in case we feel the impacts of that. It may be on the personnel side, it may be on the facility side. I just wanted you all to have some sort of a flavor of that, in case there was a question or in case you wanted to address it later. Okay? So I think that wraps up my comments. If you had any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. I've got one. So when it comes to the, the drug court, the recidivism numbers and the sobriety numbers stark increase over previous years, but still look great when you compare to other national averages.
Well, we are running an evidence-based program, so we should see the results. You know, it always disappoints me when someone I hear about, I mean, it's a small community, I hear about people relapsing who've graduated drug court, or I have a case, you know, coming back for sentencing. It's very disappointing to have that happen because we've spent so much time and energy. But here's the other piece of it that might not just be in those numbers. Individuals who do complete drug court and graduate, even if there is a recidivism or even if there is a relapse, it's much, much further down the road, or it's much lower level, or it's, it's infrequent. Do you follow me? Or even on the other end, someone who just has exposure to drug court and isn't even graduating, is lower on the recidivism scale and then farther down the road. So they're getting tools, even if they aren't successful completely, or even if they're successful, there are, it's, it's, it's not unheard of, but it's lower, less, and less frequent. So I have to always remind myself not to be disappointed that that has happened because I know that it could be worse, and we have avoided having someone in, in jail or prison during the time at least they were in drug court, so. But thank you for pointing that out. We're happy with, we're happy with what we're doing, and I think we're doing it right. It's just a matter of, you know, always pressing and making sure that we have the quality of work, that we, we need to do the good quality work, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Grotschall?
Thank you. I'd like to follow up to that, actually, then. Is there any way to measure, then, you sort of just qualified the, the recidivism and to weight it? Is there any metric that, to use that, that would account for that? So it's not just, you know, recidivist is a recidivist, right?
Right. I think that the National Drug Court statistics are really where I'm getting that concept, and if there's some specifics I can get to you, I'd be happy to, but there is a general, I don't know how to explain it any better than I just did, except to say that, you know, recidivism, it's, it can be an on-off switch, you can examine it that way, but when you're talking about somebody who recidivates by being a felon versus recidivating when they've picked up a new driving offense or a, a lower-level misdemeanor type of offense, that to me is an improvement. It's not great.
It is to me as well, and that's why I would like to, if there is a way that we could measure and capture what you're talking about, I would certainly love to explore that in the future.
Well, for Arlington, we, we, I think we do capture that information specifically when we can get the new, if, if it occurred in Arlington, for example, or we hear about it. It's very hard if someone leaves Arlington from our drug court and graduates and moves to Idaho and picks up a new charge, I'll never know about that.
Right.
But then they don't pop on the recidivist rate anyway.
Right.
Right, okay.
So I think the data is probably there. Once we have excess capacity of data analysts who can scrub it, you know, maybe we can get the access to that. Indeed. Thank you, Judge Di Matteo.
Thank you, everybody. Great to see you all.
And Mr. Haywood, our public defender, you get the honor of being the last presentation during this speed round this afternoon. Good afternoon. How are you?
I'm doing okay. Actually, the one who was-
Occupying about six hours of Judge Newman's time today.
Oh, really?
Right from that.
Your beard seems to be a little more robust this year.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
It's my protest beard. Yeah, well, well.
Can I have the clicker?
So I'm going to start in reverse, actually. Probably should have done this with the slides. So first of all, I wanted to say thank you immensely. As you know, Arlington is an expensive place to live, and that carries over to our practice. It's hard as is for a public defender's office to attract really talented attorneys to work for them, and to be, to have to do that without the salary supplement would almost be impossible. And so you are enabling us to run a really high-quality public defender's office right now, and we've seen that pay dividends. Very recently, we've had, we've done some hiring in the past year and a half since I've been the chief, and we've really attracted some great candidates, and we're just thrilled with how we're doing staff-wise, and it really is largely because of- And it really is largely because of the funding you provide to us. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. The reason I'm starting here is just because I wanted to start with, just to tell you, and I think you probably know this, just I think I've been around a little long enough to kind of get a sense of where I'm coming from. I really believe in... I believe in doing indigent defense the best way possible. And there is a standard of practice for indigent defense that we talk about. There are really two hallmarks of it. And that's to be completely zealous and completely client-centered. And it's only if you are doing those two things can you really bring balance that's needed to a criminal justice system. And that is something that, quite frankly, and my perspective is that that is needed... There's more of that that's needed in Arlington. And there has been more of that that's been needed for quite some time. So we are aiming to do that. And because there is balance required, we've got to be pretty tough. We've got to be pretty zealous. We've got to be very zealous. And we've got to work exceptionally hard. As you know from the presentation last year, one of the main hurdles to, I think, to us being really effective as an institution and really kind of an agent for positive institutional change was that we weren't getting all of the big... All the felony cases that we really were supposed to be getting, according to the statute. Without giving you all the details on this, because frankly, I'm not privy to most of them, but that situation has changed considerably. So we now... It really seemed late summer, early fall of last year, we started getting appointed to many, many more felony cases. And actually, as of January of this current fiscal year, we were appointed to as many felony cases in the entire previous... As we were in the entire previous fiscal year. So that was... We were at 450 the entire previous year, and I think we were at 450 maybe the end of January of this year. So that tells you just how much more work we're getting and how much more effective we can be as attorneys. I mean, when we're doing those kinds of cases, we're having even a greater impact for the clients who really need it. So... And, you know, just to give you a little bit of sense of kind of what we're up against in terms of... Or what we want to change. One thing that we want to change is we want Arlington to have more trials. Arlington, right now, is... Has the fewest trials in terms of the percentage of felony convictions. Only 2.5% of felony convictions in Arlington are obtained following a trial. That is higher than... Lower than even the federal rate, which is 97% of federal convictions are obtained as a result of guilty pleas. Here, it's 97.5%. And Alexandria, it's about 91% are obtained as a result of guilty pleas. And in Fairfax and Loudoun, it's somewhere around 93%. So we want to be having more trials. We want to be bringing that kind of sense of balance through really zealous advocacy. Another thing that is really... That is important to us is there was a lot of discussion about diversion. And this is a really critical part also of the work in the Arlington Public Defender's Office and the Arlington Courts in general. As you probably heard a lot about, and I think you know just from being residents of Arlington, we actually do have, I think, a disproportionately high number of seriously mentally ill people living here and seriously mentally ill people who are involved in our criminal justice system. So we are fortunate to have an incredibly... Just a really fantastic Department of Human Services. And our sheriff is deeply committed to serving the people who come through her jail as well and also through pre-trial services. But we really value those partnerships, and those are things that we are completely invested in. One of the hires that we made over the past 18 months was a brand-new sentencing advocate. We call them mitigation specialists now. But she's really proved herself to be an invaluable partner with Department of Human Services, Community Services Board, the sheriff, and other community partners in terms of advancing our practice and serving those most vulnerable of our clients. And... Did you have anything to comment on that point, Amy?
Diversion?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think there are a lot of opportunities to do more diversion in Arlington.
I want to pull your mic a little bit closer, Amy, thanks.
There is a lot of opportunities with the great CSB board that we have to do more diversion in Arlington.
So in terms of, I think, the statistics speak for themselves. I suppose at this point, I mean, that's mostly in terms of the overview that I wanted to provide for the board. We really are... I think we're well on our way to being one of the model offices in this area and probably the state. I think that there, you know, that's... We're not going to stop until we get there. So if you have questions about the work we're doing, any questions about the local criminal justice system, we're happy to answer those.
Thank you. I very much appreciate it. Your work is essential if we're going to have an equitable justice system. Absolutely essential. So do we have any further questions? Mr. De Ferenti.
Appreciate your comments about the change and so that there are more... There's more cases coming your way. I don't know that it needs to happen now, but just looking at webpage 302, the estimates for 2019 seem like they might not quite have taken into account everything you described that's the change. So maybe, you know, I'll follow up via an email just to see if these numbers are syncing with what you've seen and what your estimates are.
Part of it was the uptick started about four months into the fiscal year, three months into the fiscal year. So we were getting a lower number. And it was just a... It was kind of an... It was definitely an unusual situation. So there were times where it was dipping lower, and there was times where it was higher. And now it seems to be pretty consistent where we're getting a lot of the felony caseload. And I think moving forward in future years, there won't be that whatever little discrepancy.
Great, no problem. Gideon's Trumpet was one of the first books that really made a big impression, so thanks for what you do.
Read that, too.
Ms. Garvey.
You stated that you could do more diversions, and you want to do more diversions. What's the main barrier?
So we believe that mental illness, substance abuse should be treated outside of the criminal justice system. So diversion to us is not... Does not mean putting people on probation after they get a felony conviction. It doesn't mean, you know, putting people on probation after they plead guilty to a misdemeanor even. It definitely doesn't mean interdicting people simply because they're homeless and they're alcoholics. To us, what diversion means is when you have somebody who is encountered by the police, that we find a way to keep them from ever getting involved in the criminal justice system to begin with, divert them that very first opportunity. We have that capacity in Arlington. We have, like I said, the Department of Human Services is phenomenal. They have a CIT unit over at the Sequoia Building, which is... I have not seen anything like that. And I used to be in private practice, never seen anything like that. I was a public defender in Alexandria for eight years. They are far behind where we are. We can use that. And I think that the, you know, the sheriff is fully bought into CIT training. I think the police department has been buying into it more. I think more police officers need to be implementing that, using those techniques that they're learning and not... I think there's a tendency to rely sort of on their experience rather than what they're learning about these new techniques. But we also need more buy-in from all the stakeholders. I think there's been, you know, there's been discussions about having a mental health court for over 15 years now. And really, it's been... There's been the... We've been working on actually the really getting down to brass tacks and getting it implemented for about five years. Yeah, we're getting closer now, but there's still, you know... We want to get on the same page about what this looks like. And we, I think, we see it the way we see it. And we don't... We don't think that we should be putting... Getting people more convictions, putting people more... More people on probation. We should really find a way to divert them entirely. So that's what we mean by that. And so you think about something like marijuana. I mean, in my opinion, and I think in a lot of jurisdictions in Virginia and elsewhere, when you get arrested for marijuana, what diversion really looks like, and the commonwealth attorneys do have discretion in this regard, is not to make them go through this 251 disposition, which requires them to do drug, you know, supervised probation, to go to a drug treatment class, to do community service, used to and in many instances still does require them to have their license suspended, not to do any of that stuff. But maybe to find a way that you just continue it for a few months to drop the case or just drop the case right at that moment, once they come into court. So you're not, you know... So we're treating marijuana like I think more progressive jurisdictions do. I think we have had some, like, we have over 3,000 marijuana cases in our jurisdiction in the past seven or eight years. You know, another one is the driving on suspended case. I think we've had 12... Over 12,000 of those in the past seven years. And those are arrests that are made. And then really, until January of this year, convictions were being pursued on those. They weren't being reduced to things or dropped. You know, we don't... We think that that is all counterproductive, and we want to see that fade away. So that's how we look at it.
You good? All right, thank you. So Mr. Haywood, Ms. Stitzel, it's good to see you again. And I'm sorry I didn't catch you.
Ms. Carpenter.
Ms. Carpenter, good to see you all, and thank you for hanging in for the duration of this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I think, Ms. Jacobs, I think we've done all 10. Is that right? 10, all right? Wonderful. 10 departments, offices in 140... A little less than 140 minutes. So not bad, not bad. So with this, we're going to turn over the time to our manager, Mark Schwartz, who would like to share some information with us, since it is rare that we're ever all together at the same time. So we need to take advantage of this opportunity for him to speak to us and to the broader Arlington community.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. What I wanted to do is, and I'm going to follow up with something in writing so that you all have this and we can post it, which is I've been giving some thought to some of the concerns raised by the cultural groups. And they've made a number of points, I think, that are fair and speak in part to some of the gaps in what we prepared and also how we've explained it. So I wanted to take a few minutes to walk through some of my thoughts on this. So I do think that the way we provide support to our community arts groups is... It is appropriate to review that. And I think there are some valid concerns that I've raised. And is, not surprisingly, some of those are being drowned out by the understandable frustration that people are having with the proposals I made. So I'm convinced that we can still improve the way we provide services and support to our cultural groups. And for example, there's no reason to have a costume shop open 40 hours a week when it's used on average five hours a week. And when I found out just yesterday, each of the costumes there has a barcode on it. We've done some analysis that 2/3 of the costumes have never been... Never left the space. So that's neither good nor bad, but we have a scene shop that I think isn't perhaps located at the best location, given conversations I've had with the schools. May have a home in the new arts district eventually. But I think I was a little bit premature in pulling the trigger on that conversation. And I think that we have, for example, we have a memorandum of understanding with our public schools that is 31 years old about how to use Thomas Jefferson. We have a 25-year-old joint-use school facilities arrangement. We have a 30-year-old arts policy. And so one of the cuts I had made, which was the position that's occupied now by Hal Crawford, you know, Hal is a fantastic employee. He spends a lot of his time negotiating with individual principals about use of space. And I actually don't think that the system we have in place for the last 30 years is the best system or a workable system. I've talked to the superintendent about it, and it faces the same challenge we always face in dealing with individual principals across a number of schools. But there is legitimate frustration, I think, on part of some of the cultural groups about how that space gets allocated. So just broadly speaking, and I'm going to need to have conversations with you all as part of wrap-up as to the source of funding, I'm thinking that we should try... We should guarantee that we have staff to staff the costume shop, perhaps on an appointment basis. I think that restoring the FTE for the scene shop and putting that on a little bit different kind of schedule so that there's time freed up so that individual can help manage the mobile stage might make some sense. I think that having a facilities person down at 3,700, I think there's an opportunity. I think we might want to consider adding that back, specifically because we have a process coming up about the property next to it that we have an option agreement on. And we're talking about arts district planning. And there will be a lot of facility questions that come up there. And I think that we need to figure out how we're going to handle that. And I still think that the cuts I've proposed for audio and tech services make sense. And so a lot of issues I've thrown out on the table, a lot to have conversations about. And these are just suggestions I wanted to put out there, because I know that on Tuesday, we're going to have a lot of people come and testify. And I'm sure they still will, and they should, and make their views clear on it. But I wanted to let you know that my thinking has evolved.
Thank you. And do appreciate hearing that from you, Mr. Schwartz. And this is evidence of a system that works. Ultimately, these decisions are with us colleagues to how we operationalize the recommendations of the manager, both with the submitted budget, this sort of revised thinking, as well as the advocacy that we're hearing from the community. The buck stops ultimately with us. But I appreciate your surfacing that for public consumption, even though I suspect it will not impact at all the volume of communication that this office receives, both currently and in advance of Tuesday. Mr. Guttschall.
Yeah, I actually just wanted to thank the manager, because actually, you said, you know, you pulled the trigger too early, maybe on part of the conversation.